That was the email I read. So, the email I read was, "No, we don't get any." So can you, I'm seeing heads shaking, yes or no? So can you provide to us, do we get full state funding? Or, I just went back to the email that was sent to me right before the board meeting.
There's a component within the TOS calculation for net option funding. Currently, we have more opt-outs from the district than opt-ins. Virtual school is part of that calculation. So at the time, we have enough students within that program to net, to a net in to the district. That will impact the TOS formula and state aid that we receive.
Okay, so right now, we are not getting any currently funding.
That's correct.
So no funding for the virtual schools, which we've got legislation that's been, we've been working on for years. Is that correct? And I see Mrs. Neelish-Breis shaking her head, but I'm not sure. We've been working on legislation for quite a while, and we've not been able to get anything passed. I just want to have a clear understanding before we move.
So, I mean, there are a lot of moving components in the state aid formula. But we do receive, if they're .5 and above, we do receive, you know, the student, they're, they're part of that calculation where you get, you get a student enrollment. You get one student for this. That goes into the calculation. So we do receive funding for that student because they are a member that we can count as long as they're above .5 as part of that district.
So any student who's participating in the virtual school that has more than half-time?
Correct.
We're going to get half-time student funding essentially? I mean, we're going to get?
Whatever, .5, .8, .9.
That proportionate amount, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So my next question is, we've heard from a number of people who don't want to be in a, the normal environment, I should say, that we're going to be in the 2-3, 3-2. So what is the maximum number of virtual students, school students we can take? Because this, I think, is for 270 students, correct? But are we taking only 270? So can somebody answer that question?
Correct. Our current capacity is 270 students.
So will we take any more than 270?
The remote learning option is separate from the virtual school.
Correct.
The virtual school is a homeschool option with support.
So the virtual school is capped out at 270? And where are we at right now in enrollment?
Right now, we're at about 217 students.
217, okay. So that's what I wanted to know. I just wanted to confirm the funding component of it and how many students we had and whether or not, if we're approving for 270, we're going to go above that. Doesn't sound like we are, and so that's where we're at. So we're approving enough funding for curriculum for the 270 students we think we're going to get?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know the applications are very robust.
Yes. We have a number of applications that we will be reviewing.
So we haven't gotten all the way through the process yet, is what you're saying?
We have not, no.
Okay. And how many students did we have last year?
Last year, our enrollment, we started the school year at 190, 190 students. Our average in the last four years, actually this fall, will be our fifth year in existence. The average enrollment for the previous four years is 190 students.
Okay.
So 270 capacity is a significant increase in our enrollment, and we're excited to welcome new students to our program.
And do we have the staffing prepared to handle that?
Our current staffing can support 270 students, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Perman?
How often will this curriculum need to be renewed?
It's an annual renewal. I believe this is our last year to be able to renew.
I don't understand that last part. What do you mean?
So it's an annual renewal, but I don't, after this year, we won't be able to renew anymore. We will have to go out for RFP, I believe.
Mr. Perman, there was, we had planned on perhaps doing that this year, but with the COVID, that was why we delayed. And so because we had this additional year, we went with that. And Mrs. Koman and I are doing like this. Agree, agree with you that we do have the capacity within the district to create our own curriculum and with perhaps some additional supports. And looked into it, but with our current circumstances, just what, we weren't, we weren't positioned. I agree with many of the observations that you made today, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
This is an action item. So I entertain a motion to approve item I-1C, which is the contract between OPS and K-12 Classroom LLC. So moved. There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crackey. Any other discussion? Mrs. Gadding, I apologize. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Perman.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto our next item, I-1D. This is the purchase of Apple Devices One-to-One Technology.
That was me.
Mrs. Gadding, the floor is yours.
So I pulled this off for just a couple of reasons. The first one is, I think this is for 3,000 some devices, is that correct? About 3,000 devices?
For, for pre-K, they weren't included in every deal.
For pre-K. So my question is, we had already purchased 54,000.
One second, Mrs. Gadding, sorry. Does everybody have their mic off? Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Gadding.
Okay. So we purchased 54,000 before, and I guess, so I'm, I'm asking for this item to be pulled off for two reasons, and I'm, I am going to vote no. The first reason is, until we know what our student count is this fall, and that could be different than where we maybe started at. I know I'm getting, I had multiple calls today of transfers to other districts, and so I'm wondering if we have purchased enough already that we won't have to buy the full 3,000. And so I prefer that we not purchase technology that maybe we don't quite need yet. We won't get it anyway before school starts. So I would just think we could hold off until next meeting to see where we're at student count-wise. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, I just, from all of the research that I ever did with my own children, I just don't, I don't believe in technology for kids before kindergarten. And so for me, that's a challenge. It's a philosophical issue that I have, that I want to see them actually doing things, whether it's with Play-Doh or other things. And I realize we won't be in school with them all the time, but I, I just don't want to see them sitting on iPads. And I go crazy when I walk into a restaurant and I see parents hand their kids an iPad, and then they have a conversation, but they're not engaging their children. And so that's a philosophical thing for me, but it's also a financial thing in saying, maybe we should just hold off until we know what our student count is going to be. And maybe that number could be adjusted down if the board still so chooses to move forward.
Thank you.
We certainly, if that's the board's desire, the issue will be, even with the ordering now, we are going to be in a delay because of what's going on in the country with all of the major school districts around the country. A lot of them today announcing that they were going to be virtual. So those young people could be potentially with no device until February or March if we don't decide to make, you know, so it's a, a bet. When we look at the number of students who are requesting remote, I believe the number is 1,200. Am I close, 1,400, of who have requested a remote instruction, which is actually almost an identical number for the school, for one of our neighboring school districts that's particularly smaller than us. So that's kind of where we are with the numbers nationally. The, that number has been more like 25% of school districts, so our number is significantly lower than other school districts, even when it comes to staff accommodations. Our staff accommodation number is very, very low compared, I mean, really low compared to our light districts.
Mrs. Crackey.
When Mr. Rogers spoke and came up to the mic and he talked about opting out, opting in, was that only in regard to the virtual school? Because I'd like to know the numbers for the district of opting out with this situation or opting in. Do we have those numbers?
We don't currently have, have those numbers. When we look at the numbers, I know it hasn't been reported to me. Mrs. Utterback is coming to make another presentation, and she can speak about that when she comes up here. But typically, they make me aware of any large number, any, in any direction, and that has not shown out. When we look at the numbers who are requesting remote, it's equal almost all over the district. It doesn't matter whether it's high school or middle school or elementary school. They're almost the same percentages straight down the line. So most high schools have about, I think it was about 40, 45 students at each high school. Some are much less.
How many students can do remote? What is our capacity for doing remote?
We have not determined our capacity because we need to do a match with staff, and that will, will determine that. I think the last day for staff, I believe, is, is the end of this week, for staff to let us know that they need an accommodation for a health reason. And those would be, that would be the staff that would be staffing the remote learning option.
Okay.
Mr. Perman?
I mean, I, I don't, I'm not educated in this, this field, so Dr. Logan, I know you are. Can you, can you talk to us about, like, electronic device at that age? Is it something that can be effective?
We know the best thing is in-person with our, our little people. Our concern is that what we, we know that if students have their own device and they do not have to share, and we can load it with the kinds of apps that we would like for our young people to use and engage in, that we have a, we have a much better opportunity. And so the research is all over the place with devices with, with young people. So, you know, I'm very respectful of Mrs. Gadding's point. I don't necessarily, as a parent, probably think about wanting to have a child on, on a device all day. But when students are home, the, the activities that we would give them would be a blended approach. So it wouldn't be that they were on their device all day in terms of limiting the amount of hours that young people. We just did this recently with our kindergarten. I, I was actually sat in on a kindergarten session during our summer school that ends, is it tomorrow? Tomorrow, in summer, tomorrow in summer school? And our, with our, one of the kindergarten teachers, who actually is from Liberty, and watched her young people and her guide her young people through a lesson in the morning. So, you know, it is, it can be done. It was, she was, she did a really fantastic job. But certainly, we want to be in school all day, every day, and I reiterate that that's what we are working towards. And hopefully, with mitigating the spread, the more we can do that, quicker we can get back to a five-day.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. I just want to clarify to Ms. Gadding's point. She's asking that we maybe can push back or pull back and wait a meeting. Is that something that's even possible? Given the fact, I mean, in a contract with Apple, we've ordered these products. Number one, is that possible to change in order?
Well, this is new. This is a new one because pre-K was not included.
Okay.
So we could wait on the pre-K.
So it is possible.
But just want to remind the board, though, that there are going to be parents who are pre-K parents who are going to say, "My child doesn't have a device." So that is, that is, that is the, and the, the further we're back in the queue, which is one of the reasons we had the special board meetings early, was to hurry up and get in the queue so that we would get our devices as soon as possible. So that's the, that's a, that's a risk and.
So any, obviously, any delays will put us back further in?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Okay. Just wanted to.
Mr. Perman?
Will the purchase contract, I don't know how to put this, will, will we get a break on the price if they show up in June of next year? Will we, you know what I mean? Is there any protections for us that way? I mean, everything's kind of crazy right now.
The price that we have is?
We can't hear you.
I don't see it. Is it on? Perfect, thank you. The price that we have is the same negotiated price for the original iPads that were purchased, because it's a sole, sole purchase. And so Apple's working with us continuously.
So if they show up in June, it's just, it is what it is?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm, we're hearing that they'll be here next March. That's a long way away.
No, what, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Perman. What I said was, the longer that we wait to get in the queue, the longer the, we could anticipate the, the purchase coming through. One of our neighboring school districts just purchased, and they are, they expect to get theirs at Thanksgiving, which is, when we, when we had the emergency board meeting or the special board meeting. And one of the reasons we were, we were working so hard to get in the, to have that meeting is we were trying to get ahead of the city of Detroit Public Schools, who was also purchasing. Because we knew what a number Apple had available to get to us relatively quickly. And so that's my, that's my concern, see?
Totally, I totally agree. But did I mishear when I heard that we expect these in March?
No, no, no. I'm saying there, we could, we could be getting them in March, based on the fact that I know that a neighboring school district that just purchased said they're going to get theirs in. And that was about more than, about, almost a month ago, that they were purchasing theirs, they're expecting to get them at Thanksgiving.
Okay, so, I, I mean, I agree that we should do as quick as possible. I thought it was a very good move to do it last time. Again, my concern is, we order them tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. Instead of getting them in March, we get them in June, and.
It's beyond the return date, okay.
And are there any contractual protections against that?
I'm not sure, but I can get the answer for you. We'll, I can get the answer for you. Mrs. Neelish-Breis is coming up.
So the, Apple is a sole source provider. There is a contractual terms as part of what the district agrees to as part of that. We can specifically review the contract that Apple provides for us with regard to that specific issue. But, you know, it is, that, because they have a sole product, there is some, you know, there's not a lot of wiggle room for us with these big companies that are, are like Apple, for us to set our own terms and conditions as part of it. We have to, we don't have as much buying power with regard to that. But they have, they have provided for us, you know, the, the term, I believe, the, the information that we set out. There was a specific number in that bid. So to Mrs. Gadding's question, there's 3,000, I think, 51 iPads that we're going to purchase. What Apple will you give us for those 3,051? We do our, our standard terms and conditions that we send to any company, and they, they purchase that. And, and we have those same terms and conditions.
Lastly, Mrs. Koman reminded me that there are 750, I don't know why I didn't remember that. There are 750 students on the waitlist for pre-K.
Mrs. Gadding.
So I guess, my only point, and back to what Ms. Cassidy said, was I don't think we're going to know our opt-out numbers until probably August 10th. And so that was the only reason I thought maybe we should wait. I had multiple people calling me today saying, hey, we're, we're opting out. We, you know, haven't obviously told the district and things like that. So I guess I just wanted to make sure, if it could be a lower number, or can we change the number and say, oh, gosh, Apple, we know you've already got plenty of orders. We only need 2,500. Does that work? That's, I, I just don't want to purchase technology that is going to come late anyway, and maybe there will be a vaccine by Christmas time or the holidays and the first of the year. Maybe there won't, but then we maybe don't need these devices because we'll be in-person and we'll be using Play-Doh and everything else. So I guess that's my question.
So my experience, and I know COVID is a new experience, but my experience is that we do not serve very many of our students who are in desperate need of early childhood services. And so I can't imagine us serving less than we have in the past. The other piece that Dr. Logan mentioned, this is part of our blended learning model. And so we would not just be purchasing the iPads for the sake of being at home, but for using the model during the day as well. And so what it would look like is kind of like a three-cycle model, where students experience what they normally do, the foundation, their social experiences, literacy, math, and science. Then they would move to a representation where they would actually use the iPad and different apps to learn more about that in depth, and then go back and apply it in their real life.
Okay, and I'm not talking about opting out at the pre-K level, because I don't think that's going to happen at all. I'm talking about at the elementary level. So I'm just saying, can we deploy some of those devices to pre-K if they're not needed? So that was, that was my only point.
Okay. And those students, if they opted out, they would be either in the remote learning or the family 3-2?
Or to a different district or school system. I guess that's the calls I've been getting. And so those are the ones that I'm trying to figure out. Let's, you know, financially, how does that work? And I don't know how many we're going to have. But even if it's 200, it's 200 less devices we have to buy.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassidy.
Just really quickly, are these exactly the same devices for every level? Like, everything's the same, down to the case? Okay, I'm just kind of thinking along the lines of what you said, Mrs. Gadding. Like, we have elementary opt-out, we have high school opt-out. I mean, it's all going to just depend on those numbers, but there's some play there with, if we purchase all 3,000 of these devices and then we don't end up needing all 3,000 for this level, let's say, probably not going to happen. But there's wiggle room to use these devices at every level, correct? Because they're all the same. My child in first grade's iPad will be exactly the same as my child in high school, obviously loaded with the different curriculum and safeguards and whatnot. Okay. I just don't see that we can delay this. I mean, we cannot not have devices for students at any level.
Thank you.
And if I just might want to mention, we don't pay for the devices until we actually receive them. So you're not expending any dollars until we actually get the devices.
Thank you. And we also typically grow about 500 students a year, so that's also something to take into consideration. So this is an action item, item I-1D. I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Snite, second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Snow.
Mr. Smith, I apologize.
I just wanted to say that, well, I'm voting yes, but it's really important that we purchase these items, because early childhood education really impacts the community that I currently work and serve.
Duly noted, Mr. Smith. I apologize for missing you there. Roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
No.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Perman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item I-1E. This is the, I had to read it again. It's for Benson High School. Mrs. Gadding.
So I pulled this item off, a couple of things. Number one, the attachment wasn't even the attachment for the peripherals, it was for the roofing. So I just want to encourage board members to really look at those attachments on the agenda and make sure that we're not missing what the agenda is really saying. So the second reason I pulled it off is, I think it's great, so I do not have a problem with Benson getting these. I think it's wonderful. I know it's Title I money. I know Dr. Logan sent me some information on that. I know there's also students who are in need in other schools who will not have keypads, and I think that's really important. And so I just think the board needs to think about what we can do to make students whole across the district. Because there will be parents who buy the keyboard for their students, but then there will be students who can't afford to buy it at a school other than Benson, and they won't have those opportunities. So I guess I'm just encouraging the board, and I know that Dr. Logan shared with me this afternoon, we don't even know if they can get those devices because there's a shortage and all of that. I just want to make sure students in other high schools have those same opportunities and that we're not limiting what students have to be able to be fully effective in this environment. So that, that's the only thing that I would encourage the district and the board to think about from all students' perspective.
Thank you.
We agree. We, Mr. Dunn mentioned it when he did the initial presentation, that we wanted to order these for every student, but that supply chain told us that it was going to be impossible for us to get them. So that's why we didn't put it, because we would have encumbered a very large amount of money on the district for something that we are, didn't, we were pretty confident that we are going to be unable to get. So it's something that is in the hopper. Supply chain is still being impacted. I hope Benson gets these, but right now, to order 56, 56,000 is, we're just not going to be able to get them and don't want to encumber the money for something we can't receive. But agree 1,000% that we would like one for every one of our young people.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve item I-1E. So moved. There's a motion by.
One of us.
There's a motion by Mrs. Gadding, second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Perman.
He stepped out.
Oh, sorry. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item I-1F.
So I pulled this item off because when I went back to the description on the February 3rd meeting that we had approved, I couldn't find, I found early childhood literacy, but I couldn't find where we were spending, where we agreed to spend $5 million for classroom books. And I went through the entire PowerPoint that Mr. Roberts had put up. And, and so there's a couple of reasons that I have that concern is, one, I did, I didn't see it on the February 3rd agenda where we approved those budget items, where we were agreeing to spend that excess money. The second reason is when, and I just go back to thinking of when I was PTA president at my elementary school, and we bought all kinds of classroom materials, and the teachers don't have time to use it all, and the students aren't necessarily checking it out, and then we have a lot sitting there. And so when I look at $5 million for classroom supplies, and yet I look at math and science curriculum that needs to be updated, and I'm concerned, as I've heard from teachers about specifically our social studies curriculum at the elementary level that was given out during the pandemic. Teachers don't know if all that curriculum is coming back into the buildings. So I just would like an explanation from the district on where this fit in that February 3rd presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
I love your face mess, by the way.
Thank you. My son got it for me. So yes, the February 3rd presentation included the classroom literacy, early literacy materials, as well as the sensory materials for pre-K through sixth grade. And as we put out the RFPs for those materials, what came back was much less than we had originally budgeted for. And so the opportunity to supplement classroom libraries with multicultural children's literature presented itself at that point, to use some of the funds that were not going to be used for the early literacy materials and the censoring materials.
So I guess, in response to that, I think, I think it really isn't fair to say that we approved that because we didn't approve this particular item. So then this really should, we should just say this is a new item on the agenda, because it doesn't really correlate to what we approved back in February, and it's unfair, I think, to the board to make it look like that's what we were approving. So that's, that's my point on that one. I'm, I'm going to vote no, because I think that, I think classroom materials are great, but I don't actually ever see them get utilized to the extent that teachers need other things in the classrooms which relate to curriculum and specific. in the classrooms which relate to curriculum and specific materials that help with supporting the curriculum they have. And so, I can remember spending thousands of dollars on classroom books, and they didn't get touched because teachers have so much to do in their day as it is. So I guess those are the two things. I think if we're going to say we approved something in February, I think it really should be something we approved, and this wasn't that. And so I think we need to be fair to the board on saying, hey, this is a new item we're bringing to you, because we had excess money and we didn't use it.
I thank you for your observations, and we see classroom library books as essential early literacy materials for students. We, this opportunity that provided itself to us was very exciting, because in our partnership with Children's Literacy Initiative, and the body of research shows that one of the most critical aspects of the literacy environment in elementary school is the classroom library. Richard Allington says that to be an effective classroom library, we would need at least 750 titles in that library. And as we know, teachers usually spend their own funds to create their classroom libraries. The classroom libraries need to be engaging to students, have high-quality children's literature that they want to read. Research also shows that in classrooms with high-quality classroom libraries, students read 50% more of the time, which makes sense if they have access to those high-quality books. With the multicultural children's literature that we've selected, it provides opportunities for students to have windows and mirrors, mirrors where they see themselves represented in the text that they're surrounded with, which we know is not always the case for all of our students. And this opportunity to provide between about 350 and 450 classroom books, and we selected hardcover, so they would withstand the test of time and be well-used and well-loved and hold up to repeated readings, will benefit our students to see their own lived experiences, their families represented in the books in their classroom, and also to students to take on the perspectives of others, and to get a more accurate representation of our diverse world that we're sending them to. And I feel it dovetails really nicely with what the students from the youth groups we're speaking of in terms of, there's no simple solution to the problem of equity in our district, but starting with rich multicultural classroom library books is going to make a huge difference for students starting right at preschool. So, thank you.
Okay, so it's a lot of different cultural things in there. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
Because I really didn't read that when I read that the first time.
I can talk about a little bit.
Yeah, could you, would you please just expand on it?
Yeah, I sure can.
Because I feel like this wasn't something we had before, so.
Well, in terms of the, on the listing of things that we said we were going to purchase, it was one of the things we said we were going to purchase. We were going to purchase additional literacy materials was one. I believe it was a little bit higher than five in the additional spend. One of the things that we did when we went through the selection of Into Reading, and we had a committee that came together, Mr. Smith served on that committee, and they looked at the multicultural features of the Into Reading. And it was a weakness of that. It had many, many strengths in that it was very rigorous. We felt it would, it definitely will challenge children and make much stronger readers, and which is why it ended up being selected, and the overwhelming selection of our teachers. But, in no series is perfect, and one of the material weaknesses of it was that the books that went alongside with it were not as, were not as reflective of our students' their lived experiences. I like the way you said it way better than whatever I'm going to say, but the students' lived experience, you said windows and mirrors, in terms of what they would be able to see in these classroom libraries. So at that time, we knew that we were going to have to supplement the, which is a normal thing, because a reading series is not a, it's not a, it's not a whole package. You need to still add some other things to it. And we know that classroom libraries are essential. Thank you for getting the hardcovers. I actually didn't know that, so thank you for that, because they are more durable, and, but that was identified by the team that reviewed it, which was a big, was a big team of folks. And that's how we ended up getting the, moving in this direction to have these classroom libraries that reflected all children's experiences. There's not a child who won't be able to see themselves in those classroom libraries. But thank you for the question. Appreciate it.
Okay. No, thank you. You've changed my mind. I did not, I did not see it that way. And when I was looking at what we had approved in February, this didn't specifically tie to that early literacy piece and all those bullet points that was, were under it. So, I was trying to figure out exactly what are we doing here, and we're spending more money than what we had said. So tell me on the February 3rd, you said we were spending less than what we originally had said we would spend, so I can't remember what the, what have we spent so far of the total, which was like, what, four something? Is that right?
I had my eyes dilated today, and so I'm having a really difficult time with this.
Oh, gosh. And I'm fogging.
Mrs. Gadding, would you assist? Thank you. Oh, thank you.
So there were, there were some pieces, and with the new ELA adoption, there were some early literacy pieces and then some multi-sensory pieces.
Right.
And some of the pieces that are early literacy or ELA and multi-sensory, they fall into all three of those categories. And similar to what Mickey and Dr. Logan had mentioned, when you take a look at purchasing classroom libraries and books for students, that falls into early literacy, but also the ELA adoption piece.
Okay. No, that's great. So thank you for clarifying all that, and I will be voting for it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Pearlman.
So, I had to step away for a second. This is the one that includes $467,000 from Sherwood. Is that correct?
Correct.
Did they assist in the selection of any of these books?
Did Sherwood?
Anyone from their organization help?
We had several different groups assisting with the selection of the books. We had the committee that Dr. Logan spoke of earlier from diversity and equity. We had the, it's on my computer, the Native Indigenous, sorry, the, thank you. Center, yes, thank you. The EL department, dual-language.
Sherwood Foundation?
Not the Sherwood Foundation.
Okay, that's all I was asking about. If they were able to assist in selecting any books as well?
They did not assist in selecting the books.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gadding.
So I finally, I pulled up the, the estimated cost of the early literacy was for early childhood through 3rd grade, and was for things like that were listed out. So we already done these things, organizational bins, instructional rugs, flexible seating, pocket charts, lighting, all of those things, and it came in at under that amount. And so, is this going through, I'm sorry, did this go through 6th grade?
Yes.
So we changed the parameter 2 as well?
So, and the Sherwood funds and the funds from the ELA adoption are being used to purchase the texts for 4th through 6th grade.
4th through 6th grade. Okay, awesome. Thank you for clarifying all those things.
Other questions? Thank you. Also, thank you, Mrs. Gadding, for pulling this off. I got some additional information. Colleagues, if your mic's on, please turn them off. Also, this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve item I-1F.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey. Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nineye.
Motion carries. You still want this, folks? Alrighty, so we're moving on to item, item I-1G, and after this item, we'll take a five-minute break and then start our information item, because I think there's some people that have to go to the restroom. All right. Dr. Logan says no, they're not. All right, so this is the second reading for policy 4043 and policy 5008. Any other?
Can Mr. Ray just speak to the points that Mrs. Miller brought up during her public comments?
Sure. This was also brought up when it was brought in front of the board the last time. The referral to restorative justice was a change in LB 79209, so that was an addition from that piece of legislation. This was not a recommendation necessarily that came from staff. It was part of the legislation that added that wording.
When did that legislation pass?
There's an effective date of September 1st, 2019. I don't know if that's specific to that line.
That's one of the, yeah, it was effective. Okay, perfect, thanks.
Ms. Ryan.
Could we maybe have somebody from the district, just to clarify what restorative justice practices we will be using are, and what that looks like, so then we have a little bit more clarification about the actual services we'll be referring to.
We actually try to take the word out. We just use restorative practices. We take the justice, well, the reason we take the justice out is because that is a prison model, and so we try to take the justice out.
Yes. Part of the collaborative attendance improvement plan identifies, prior to restorative practices, identified six barriers for students struggling with attendance. When this one was added, we went back and looked at what do we already do? And so when a student is struggling coming to school, and there's been a verification that maybe there's bullying happening, a mediation may take place between the administrator and the two students. If they're, if a student is struggling and may be missing excessive absences because there's a problem with the teacher, there may be a change in class. If there's an issue, Mrs. Crystal Boyd leads family and community relations and does an impeccable job, we have a referral application process. If families, and we process quite a few each year, if there's a family that's struggling because the child feels that he or she's being picked on or doesn't fit in, then Mrs. Boyd will work with the administration and the family to try to find resolve. In many cases, it's where they sit down together and they problem-solve. And sometimes, in some cases, it may be where the family just says, my child does not feel comfortable in this school, we would work with the family if necessary on a change of placement.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ms. Ryan, you good? Are you, did you get your, okay.
This is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve item I-1G. Oh, sorry. Yes.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Dr. Holman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey. Pearlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Eightye.
Sorry. Nineye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will take a five-minute break and come back at 10:10 or 10:09.[1421.15] All right, folks, it is 10:09. If everybody can start making their way to their seats. As we prepare for item I-2A, this is the update from administration, preparing for a responsible return to school, student attendance, and human resources. I believe this is Mrs. Utterback and Mr. Wakefield. She does. Oh, we, Dr. Logan, we're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I was going to say a good night, but it's not the end, but good evening, everyone, again. We, this afternoon, this evening, we are going to present on two items. This afternoon, Ms. Utterback is going to present on attendance and some other health-related items, and Mr. Wakefield as well, and we have Mr. Eubanks who's going to present on the, on athletics and activities. As we shared at our last board meeting, we began this journey to, towards the reopening of our brick-and-mortar schools with stakeholder engagement. While we knew that the most important thing is our local context, it was important for us to understand what's going on in the state, understanding what's going on federally, and also our local guidance. We engaged our health experts, which we continue to engage. We have a weekly call with health experts, our local and state leaders. We've had conversations with nearby districts and fellow large urban school district across the country as a member of the Council of Great City Schools. I meet regularly with the superintendent of Des Moines Public Schools, and I've added Denver Public Schools to that as well. We also worked with our students, staff, and family on surveys and focus groups, and then lastly, we had a Board of Education workshop. Next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Logan, and good evening, President Snow and Board of Education members. My name is Lisa Utterback, and I'm the Chief Officer for Student and Community Services. In August of 2018, our district took extensive proactive measures to improve attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism with our Strive for 95 Focus. When it comes to student attendance, this year is going to be different. Students previously were encouraged to come to school with a sniffle or a headache because their nine days had to last them throughout the year. While attending school remains an expectation, we understand the nature of the virus and have made necessary changes to ensure safety is our top priority. We do expect students who are healthy to attend school every day during their 3-2 family model, as well as at-home learning. Unlike the previous two years and Strive for 95 Focus, if a student or anyone in their household is ill, the student must stay home. Staying home is for the health and safety of everyone in the school community. Symptoms and indicators to closely monitor are the following: cough, chills, rigors, which is a sudden feeling of cold with shivering, accompanied by a rise in a fever, and sweating, shortness of breath, a sore throat, loss of smell, nausea, vomiting, fever, exposure to someone who has tested positive for COVID-19, or traveling outside of the country or in a current hotspot in the United States. Students are required to stay home when they are or someone in their home is ill or experiencing any previously mentioned symptoms. Every parent and guardian must do their part because they would expect others to do the same when it comes to the safety and well-being of their children. In addition to five facial coverings, and due to the generous support of a local philanthropist, the district will provide yet another useful safety tool to families. Twenty thousand oral digital thermometers have been ordered and will be distributed to families in need. We expect these thermometers to be used to assist us all in the effort to reduce the spread and outbreaks of COVID-19. Staying home when ill will protect others in the school community. COVID-related absences will be excused absences. We will continue to follow Board Attendance Policy 5008 concerning COVID-19-related absences, which outlines expectations and practices for documenting excused, unexcused, and excessive absenteeism. We know this coming year is not going to be normal. With that said, our team will provide training and additional guidance to schools and families on how to accurately report and record COVID-related absences, which will be considered excused. Attendance will be recorded every day for all students during in-person instruction and at-home learning in Infinite Campus. As a direct result of COVID-19, Infinite Campus newly released some features earlier this month that will allow teachers and students to remain connected during at-home learning. We are currently piloting these tools with some schools, and we'll have more information to come in the next few weeks. Healthy students are expected to attend school on time and every day during their scheduled 3-2 family model in-person days, and students will also be expected to connect and engage in learning with their teachers daily during at-home learning. Unlike March, we are now preparing for a one-to-one technology initiative. Students will have the necessary tools and resources to make a seamless transition to at-home learning. These iPads will provide both students and their educators the opportunity to remain connected to one another each day to assure learning continues regardless in what setting. And I'm going to preface this to all the students at home and to all of you. We are going to have 54,000-plus students with the necessary tools and resources to check in daily, connect with their educators, and continue learning while at home. Attendance will be expected and will be taken in Infinite Campus. And to all of our students at home, particularly our middle and high school students, you will now have everything that you need at your fingertips to be that role model and to remain connected with your teachers and remain on task with your learning. We expect you to be hashtag a responsible student. Learning from what happened in March, we as a district are now prepared. I would like to close with attendance by also mentioning, schools will continue to have their attendance teams and utilize the attendance dashboard during meetings to monitor student attendance data. When attendance concerns are noted, communication, as always, with students and families will take place to identify those barriers, align resources and supports with the goal of improving attendance. And we know that ongoing partnerships with families are vital to improving attendance. I am now going to transition to stakeholder engagement. As a direct result of COVID-19, this year has to be different. Several layers of safety efforts will work to reduce the spread and outbreaks of COVID-19 based on guidance from health experts. The virus is spread from person to person, and therefore, limiting the number of outside stakeholders into the building will be key. As a district, we must be consistent with our safety practices. We certainly recognize and value our ongoing partnerships and collaboration with parents and guardians and community partners. By working together, we have been able to provide essential supports and services to our students and families to make certain they have the needed resources to achieve. It certainly will take all of us working together to make it happen. We will do this, but it will look different this year. As we prepare to responsibly open our doors and welcome staff and students back next month, health and safety is top priority. As we plan again for that responsible return, we have closely reviewed all levels of stakeholder engagement to protect the safety and well-being of our staff and students. When it comes to any stakeholder engagement, I want to preface, all program providers and visitors to any school will be required to adhere to the directed health measures set forth by the Omaha Public Schools with guidance from their Centers for Disease Control and local health officials, including wearing a facial covering, washing hands and sanitizing hands, social distancing, and cleaning of equipment and areas. All providers and visitors will be required to conduct a COVID-19 self-assessment screening checklist to include four questions to determine if they are able to enter into the school. If any answer yes to these questions, they will not be allowed into the school. Due to the nature of vital services and supports provided to students and families, the following partnerships will continue to serve at the school level. Our before and after-school programming, which is Collective for Youth Providers and the Omaha Public Schools Foundation Kids Club, Community Behavior and Mental Health Services, Health Screenings, Vision Collaborative, our school-based health centers, and our work with Health and Human Services. The above community providers and services will participate in an OPS Health and Safety Orientation hosted by the district. This orientation will review our district's expected direct health measures that need to be followed. In addition, providers and partners will work with school administration on space and safety transitions at the building level. Now, we have considered limiting a few areas. I want to again underscore these changes are a direct result of COVID-19 and will help decrease the number of outside adult interactions with students and staff to assist us with reducing exposure to outbreaks of COVID-19. All in-person field trips and guest speakers will need to transition using virtual teams. All in-person mentoring will need to transition to virtual using teams, with the exception of success mentors, which is actually school-based staff that work with the students in their respective buildings. When it comes to visitors, we want to limit traffic and groups in schools and classrooms. Parent meetings should be conducted virtually whenever possible. If meetings must be conducted, and they will be, in person, parents and guardians should book appointments in advance to allow for planning proper safety precautions. And when it comes to the use of facilities, the use of the Omaha Public Schools facilities outside of the traditional instructional day will not be granted. The district will not be accepting any permits from any outside agencies at this time. The exceptions, obviously, are our current before and after-school programming providers and the agencies where we have an agreement for a shared space. During this unprecedented time in COVID-19, one thing is for certain, and that is that our schools and the caring adults in them have a profound impact on the lives of our students. Relationships and connectedness to caring adults is crucial. This work will still continue, but it will look different during this pandemic. I want to close by thanking our parents and community members and partners for all of your upcoming support. This year, COVID-19 has changed the game and rules and the way we do business to safeguard our focus on health and safety. I am now going to turn it over to Chief Human Resources Officer, Mr. Charles Wakefield.
Thank you, Ms. Utterback. Good evening, Dr. Logan, President Snow, Board members. Thank you for staying with us so late. I know it's a little difficult. I, myself, am beginning to regret the tie, so. In addition to the many safety measures discussed at the June 29th board meeting and that Ms. Utterback just mentioned, we are also implementing several additional safety measures specific to staff, including, beginning last week, we began to send staff a return-to-work notification that specified the return date and provided them with information on how to let us know if they weren't able to return to work. Each staff member who does this will be contacted by a human resources representative within 10 business days to discuss options potentially available to them. In mid-June, we began implementing the Health Assess Assessment that Ms. Utterback also mentioned, that all staff are asked to complete prior to starting work. This confidential self-assessment automatically displays when a staff member or an employee accesses their time clock to clock in or out. We are working on adding it to, to display automatically as a notification when an employee logs onto any district computer, and we're also posting it in prominent places. I do want to reinforce, this is a self-assessment. We are not collecting any data from this assessment, but rather asking employees to assess their own health based on the questions provided to make decisions about whether they should come into work. Additionally, in working with IMS, District Communications, and Health Services, we have implemented or are implementing an electronic reporting tool for each COVID case that will coordinate responses from Human Resources, Health Services, and District Communications. This will allow us to provide a faster and a coordinated response from the district when we have reports of COVID cases, so that we can adequately address each one of these. We continue to reinforce all these safety measures and expectations for all staff through signage provided by district operations, you see many of the signs around you today, and through ongoing regular district communications. Finally, we are moving as much of our professional development to a virtual professional development as possible, including, for the first time ever, hosting our annual four-day New Teacher Institute as an entirely virtual event. Our new teacher's first experience with OPS will be entirely virtual. Additionally, I believe Secondary Education is hosting their first curriculum day entirely virtual this year as we move forward. Even with the many safety measures that we have in place, we recognize that there will be instances when staff will not be able to work in the fall. In these cases, we are working closely with Student and Community Services, Research, and Curriculum and Instruction to determine staffing changes that may be needed at each school and each department, and also determine staffing required for the remote learning program due to COVID-19. Do note, the remote learning program will be staffed primarily by those teachers who are high-risk and unable to teach in person. Using the guiding principles displayed on your slide there, Human Resources will work closely with each individual school and staff member to identify solutions that best support our staff and best support our students, so that we can provide a world-class education to all of our students. Additionally, we are actively recruiting for some of our positions that tend to have more individuals who are potentially high-risk. These positions include bus drivers, nutrition services, and substitute teachers. While we always recruit for these positions, this active recruitment effort this summer involves radio ads for bus drivers you may have heard recently on several local radio stations, yard signs at many of our schools and other sites, flyers at community agencies, ongoing social media recruiting, in-person recruiting, and online and job fair recruiting. Mr. Steve Eubanks will now provide us additional information on athletics and other extracurricular activities.
Good evening. I'm Steve Eubanks, Supervisor of Athletics for the Omaha Public Schools, here to discuss athletics and extracurricular activities. The priority of the Omaha Public Schools athletics and extracurricular activities is to ensure the health and safety of our students, coaches, sponsors, and provide equitable access for all of our students. As preparation begins for fall athletics and activities, the NSA return to activities protocols are one set of guidance that will inform our decision-making process. This summer, I was part of a statewide committee made up of healthcare professionals, superintendents, principals, and athletic administrators, which helped to develop these protocols. This comprehensive document intends to assist schools with the necessary protocols to be followed to allow high school activities to proceed in some manner for the 2021 school year. The return to activities protocols outlines four phases of activities which align directly with the phases outlined in the Nebraska Directive of Health Measures. Each phase is color-coded in order to increase understanding. Phase one is represented by the color red. It's the foundational base, which is most restrictive. During phase one, only individual skill development and general conditioning is permitted. There is to be no direct contact between students, no grouping of students, and no shared equipment. Phase two is represented by orange, and phase two is the interim preparatory phase. Coaches and sponsors may design modified practices and activities consisting of smaller defined groups. All planned activities must limit contact, limit sharing of equipment, and emphasize social distancing. Phase three is represented by yellow. During phase three, practice rehearsals and competitions may commence. All students and coaches are expected to practice social distancing when not actively involved. And phase four is represented by green. Phase four is the final phase, and it's achieved once there are no DHMs or local health restrictions. Social distancing should be practiced when practical. As we prioritize the health and safety of students, the NSA phases are one source of input for our planning. We know conditions can vary from one community to another and evolve over time. So Lori Boda, OPS Supervisor of Health Services, works closely with the Department of Health and Human Services. So Lori Boda, OPS Supervisor of Health Services, works closely with fellow health professionals in our community. We will decide procedures for our district community as we have over the summer. We have devised summer activity guidelines to help protect our students and coaches. We've utilized a phased approach when implementing the summer opportunities, and before expanding our summer activities, we made sure that the safety guidelines and protocols were securely in place. Our summer activity offerings currently include outdoor conditioning, sports-specific training, weight training, fine arts camps, clinics, tryouts, and athletic camps, clinics, and summer leagues. Since summer activities began on June 1st, we have had instances of students who've tested positive for COVID-19, and we have had instances where students reported being exposed to COVID-19 by family members or friends. In each instance, district protocols were followed, and the Douglas County Health Department provided guidance for each case. District administrators worked effectively with school administration, coaches, sponsors, students, and families to implement the safety recommendations that were followed. To ensure the safest possible environment for all participants during 2021, our OPS student athletes are still required to obtain a pre-participation physical examination and complete all essential OPS and NSA forms. In preparation for fall activities, not only have we been working collaboratively with state and local officials, but we've also been sharing ideas and best practices with the Council of Great City Schools. And it's important for us to engage in conversation and planning with other large urban school districts across the country. Because the current health conditions are different from state to state and county to county, the current plans for fall activities varies greatly between the large school districts in our country. In order to be diligent, we've also been paying close attention to athletic plans of colleges and universities. At this moment, approximately 20 Division II and Division III schools on the East and West Coasts have canceled fall athletics. Division I schools of the Ivy League recently voted also to cancel fall athletics. And the Big Ten Conference and Pac-12 Conferences have canceled all non-conference contests this fall. The utilization of multiple data sources and the collaboration with local, state, regional, and federal agencies, officials, and leaders demonstrate our commitment to a safe and responsible return of fall athletics and activities. Our next steps are to continuously review our summer activity programs, work collaboratively with healthcare professionals to gauge the health of our stakeholders, especially our students and staff, refine our training, protocols, and guidelines to ensure that we are prepared for all of our students and coaches to be actively engaged in the safe return of athletics and activities. A detailed announcement regarding athletics and extracurricular activities will be made on August 3rd. This completes my report.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions, but Mr. Eubanks, while I have you already at the podium, I'll take the first question. So with everything that you know right now with our student athletes, the students that have tested positive for COVID or may even came into contact with COVID, would you say it's fair or is it safe to have contact sports this fall?
Mr. Snow, I think that's the million-dollar question that keeps a lot of us up at night. I know that the National Federation, which governs all high school athletics, is carefully poring over that. I can tell you that the Nebraska School Activities Association that governs the athletics and activities in our state is poring over that, as well as state associations across the country, university presidents, as well as local superintendents all over the nation. And I will tell you that we have spent a lot of time poring over that very question. The thing that I can say, first and foremost, is that there's great benefit to extracurricular activities. I'm one that it has changed my life, but I think that we need the time to truly look at the health, safety, and well-being of all of our student athletes and our coaches. And we're hopeful that in three weeks, we'll have more data, we'll be able to collaborate with those in our metro area and across the nation to come up with a plan. But OPS will never sacrifice the safety of our students or our staff.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll open up, starting with Mrs. Godding and then Mrs. Crackey.
So, Mr. Eubanks, hello, how are you?
Very well, fogging up a little bit, but good.
Yeah, me too, so I know, my glasses are off. On the way here, I got the question from a parent about practices with the 3-2 model and what that looks like for the student who isn't in school, and how they get to practice, and whether there will be buses and all of that. So could you speak to that for us?
Well, the thing that I could say is, that's another definite, complex issue that we're hoping that the extra three weeks will afford us. We have pored over multiple options to how kids can safely be engaged in athletics and activities, from the point of looking at each sport individually for the fall, each activity individually, but you bring up a great point that we're hoping to have more information on August 3rd.
So on August 3rd, we should know about what the sport's participation will be as far as what OPS is gonna do, as well as how practices will be handled the following week when school starts, correct?
Exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Crackey.
I thought I heard you tell us that the fine arts was an activity that children have.
Yes.
And I know we've done summer school with instrumental things, you know, and when school starts again, I can see that they could keep their distance pretty well. What will be happening with the choirs, especially something like show choir?
That's another great, another great point. I think that we will weigh all the options, but once again, making sure that safety of our kids is paramount. Once again, looking to have very detailed plans moving forward for all athletics and all activities, including show choir, as well as, you know, the full array of activities on August 3rd.
And those children try out earlier, you know, like some of the other things might also, but I just wanted to mention that because I like our students to be able to do those things a lot. I think that's important.
I agree.
Any other questions for Mr. Eubanks?
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, first of all, for your presentation. Very informative, and I would not want your job. This is one of the toughest areas, because like you said, on extracurricular, it's the reason why some of these kids go to school. I mean, right? School is school, but if you have your extracurricular activities, it can just make school so much better for so many students. So this is really tough, because you're, it's just tremendously difficult. So you mentioned a lot of different entities that you folks are obviously consulting, watching universities. I think the thing that I'm hearing the most is if other districts in our city, and obviously we're looking at large districts, Des Moines and Denver and whatnot, but obviously OPS, we play other districts in our city, Miller, Rolston, and so forth. Are these decisions that we are going to make also going to be encompassed with those other districts? I mean, if we've got surrounding districts that don't stop athletics, don't put the same provisions that we do, it's very hard for our parents, coaches, schools to take. It's a hard pill to swallow when everyone else is doing it different than we are. So I'm just kind of curious how much of the other districts come into play with our decisions, if you can somewhat answer that. I know.
I can answer that, I think, you know, with a lot of experience. Being involved with athletics for most of my career with the Omaha Public Schools, we're a part of a Metro Conference made up of 19, 19 schools, seven of which are Omaha Public. I do all the scheduling for all of those 19 schools. So we are intertwined, we are competing with, with those schools on a consistent and regular basis. It is something that communication and collaboration with those other schools of our conference and the Class A schools across the state is important. However, our primary focus is the 54,000 students that we serve in the Omaha Public Schools. We need to do what is right for them first and foremost. As I said, collaborate with our brother and sister schools, make sure that we are communicating on a regular basis, but the true focus needs to be on our kids and the safety and well-being of all involved.
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, Ms. Cassidy.
Having said that, will, I know we've done a lot of work over the years with our middle school sports and building them up, because obviously, your middle school is your pipeline to high school. Will all levels be looked at the same, as far as, I'm assuming, in evaluating how things move forward, middle school, high school, same level, same provisions will be taken, exactly the same?
Excellent question. When it comes to safety, I think that, you know, that's paramount and will be the same for high school and middle school, but we have discussed multiple options. The, the one key factor that differentiates our middle school programs from our high school programs currently is that our high school programs are a part of 33 Class A schools in the state.
Right.
The members of our conference. Our middle schools, the 12 middle schools in the Omaha Public Schools, we only compete against each other. We have a lot more flexibility with scheduling, with changing, with devising our own to best meet the, the safety needs and still provide opportunities at our middle level than we do at the high school level, because we are a part of the much bigger picture across the state at high school.
That's valid. Thank you.
Mr. Proman.
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks. I didn't even realize you were sitting right next to me the whole time, so, good to see you. Couple quick questions. Is there any, and this is kind of a broader question, too. I think pool testing is one of the most underutilized and undertalked about things in all of this. Are you familiar with that, and has there been any talks about using that in athletics? And then I guess I would, I would ask that for teachers, too. I know there's 5,000 teachers, but that is a tool that could really limit the spread of this.
So what we have done in our summer programming is tried to create smaller, isolated pods. So if it comes down to an incident, which we've experienced, we know who is in attendance on those days, and it's these 24 other students that we can control. So we've kept the numbers very, very small, very tight, just for that ra, just for that reason. As the interscholastic athletics broaden, I think it's doable, and we've talked about some of those options, but I think that for certain sports, they would like the capacity of the majority of the students. Most of our varsity football programs, or the football program in general, might be 100 students. So it becomes a little bit more challenging to chunk that up into 25s, but we're exploring every option at this moment.
And with the different phases, is that, I mean, is it different for sports? I mean, you hear so much about golf and tennis is just so different than basketball and football. I mean, how's that being approached?
I, I think that we're gonna look at each sport and their, their rules and regulations on, on their own merit. And I think that you're exactly right. There are some nuances and some differences with that, and that's been recognized from the national level on down through our, you know, governor's office with the Directive of Health Measures. So individual sports, limited contact, and contact sports, I think will be looked at each through different lenses in how to keep the kids safe.
Okay. My other question is just about, I'm looking at page six, and, and the PowerPoint, the self-assessment for staff, number three, it talks about, have you been diagnosed with COVID in the last 30 days? That seems to be a much bigger timeframe than anything I've seen before. Is that, can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Thank you, Mr. Proman. That came from Ms. Buda and CDC's original self-help assessment. We, we continue to work with that. We have not updated that at this point. We do work with staff if they've been diagnosed and medically cleared. We tell them that they can ignore that question for that self-assessment. They don't have to go home each time they see that.
Okay. If there's, you know, I'm always trying to think of Plan A, B, and C. If there's not enough substitutes in a particular school, is combining a class in an elementary school, or even a middle school, or any other school, is that being considered for, you know, two days, 10 days?
Excellent question. We would work individually with each school, because each school's environment is slightly different. Some of our schools have larger classrooms and can combine a class and effectively still social distance. Some of our schools have very small classrooms and may struggle with social distancing if we start adding additional students in. So we'd work with individual principals to brainstorm and make decisions around that. We'd also look at non-instructional staff and other support staff we have to, to use to effectively meet our students' needs.
Okay, my final question is kind of based off a news article, is actually an editorial I read this weekend about some really outside-the-box things that are being considered across the country, like closing down streets and having classes outside, because, you know, what we're hearing, you know, everything changes constantly, we know that, but just being outside just seems to be much better than inside, and I know that's obviously not perfect, but the benefits may be there. Is that something that's being considered?
And I'm smiling under my mask, because you, but you can't see that, because we read the same article. I don't think we, and maybe Dr. Logan knows more than I do, I don't think we've explored that at this point, but I'm sure that we'd be willing to explore any option that's good for kids.
I think that's happening in large cities that have small campuses. We have pretty large campuses pretty much everywhere, so if, if folks wanted to, probably with the exception of Liberty, which is our, you know, kind of city campus, they could potentially have, and maybe Castelar, we have, they could potentially have room outside. And we encourage that, even in non-COVID, to have time outside if you can. I think that we are thinking about to, you know, when you want to have an instructional setting, you, you know, you kind of desk and those kinds of things, or, or things for, for children to write on, and that outside for some amount of time, you know, maybe having a 45-minute science class outside or a social studies class outside, but not necessarily as a fix for all day, or to, you know, to have all of the children and then just be depending on outside. You'd be weather-dependent, you'd be dependent on many, on, on many, many things, so. I've seen that, I also read that article.
Actually, a couple other questions came to mind. I got a question like third-hand from a dual-language, and, you know, I should know a lot more about the dual-language program, but the way it was explained to me is their time could be exceptionally limited with their students, just because of the way it's set up. Can you talk a little bit about that and what's being done there?
Yeah, they spend part of the day when they're, the English part- Yeah, they spend part of the day when they're, the English part of the day and the Spanish part of the day. So they would flip. So it's, it's not necess, I mean, they would have the same amount of time as everyone else. It's just that they spend half the day with their Spanish, with Spanish centric or, and the other half of the day with English, with English centric. They would still do that on their two-day or three-day week, depending on what the, what the week is.
Okay. And is, final question, is the start date for schools, for the focus schools, is that any different this year?
Uh, the Wilson Focus School, I know we have a parent here from Wilson Focus. We, uh, work with the staff and the parents. They are going to follow pretty much the district calendar and kind of add their days to the end. One of the reasons, well, the, the major reason that we felt it was prudent to do that is because we don't, we have, we may have so much variability with the calendar and we did not want to have, they have a fabulous calendar, by the way, but that year-round calendar. But not knowing what the measures would be when we would open, we did not want them to have more remote learning than everyone else. If, if, if we had had to start remote, which, you know, at this point, we don't have to start fully remote. So that's, that's what Wilson Focus is doing.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Scotty.
So I'll start with Mr. Wakefield. Did you give us the date on when the deadline for teachers or did maybe Dr. Logan say that? When do they have to tell you whether they're coming back full-time?
The, the initial deadline was this Friday, which I believe is the seventeenth. If a teacher has a unique circumstance or has an issue that happens post-July seventeenth, we would, of course, work with them.
Okay. And I know that Dr. Logan sent something, whoops, sorry. So I know that there's a bit of a difference between how OEA President Miller fills about distance learning and how NSAA Marlene Werbine, based on the email that you sent. So I have a question and, and part of it's because I've, I've had so many parents and I had students over the weekend that, you know, reached out to me and just said, Mrs. Scotty, how are we going to do this? Because we have to see our teachers every day. So if a teacher or canon teacher who wants to do distance learning, and I truly mean webcam in their classroom, on them, if they want to do that in their classroom five days a week so that the students who are there have it and the students who aren't there are synchronous with them, at one o'clock, you're on with that teacher and you're seeing the lesson and you're experiencing what's happening and you can, you know, send your question even via a text or an email, are we okay with that?
I love the question and love the, love the, um, the initiative of teachers that would want to do that. We'll, we'll take that question and, and get you, get you an answer.
Okay.
Not, I mean, I can tell, I mean, just anecdotally, that's fantastic. But I think there's a little bit more complicated and a little bit more complex. So we just want to make sure that we, and appreciate the initiative of teachers that would want to, would want to do that.
And, and I have heard from some teachers that yes, we want to do that. And certainly the kids who are at that high school level that right now are realizing, wow, I'm going to see my teacher five times a month, they're realizing that that's going to be very challenging. So the other part of that question that I had from a parent this morning was, is it possible? And, and really around dual enrollment, will our dual, or will our schools who do dual enrollment with us allow those credits if we're not teaching a hundred percent of the time? And if not, or even if they do, is it possible for students to take the class directly at UNO instead of taking it in the high school? So for instance, if the person is taking AP Calculus, can they do that virtually with UNO instead of doing it with our high schools?
Yeah, and I think I would have to defer to Ms. Colmine.
We've actually worked a lot of that out already because, because UNO is going to be remote anyway. It is not, it's more of a non-factor. So we've worked that out with our special programs and with our dual enrollment programs. Mrs. Colmine and her team already met with UNO regarding that.
So yes, they will be able to do that.
Absolutely.
So that's a great answer from parents who have decided that they need to move on and get that instruction during the entire week. Can you walk us through, so you just talked about dual language and the remote piece. Does that mean we will have enough staff available to do the dual language program? Or is that part of what we're still waiting for this Friday to figure out how we're going to do that?
We, we're currently ninety-seven percent filled in all teachers. We have, I want to say four buildings, if I remember correctly, that are below ninety-five percent. And many of those buildings below ninety-five percent filled with teachers are struggling in the area of special ed. Dual language has not been a significant concern for us this spring and summer hiring. However, I do have to wait till this Friday to see how many teachers have underlying health conditions or other reasons that they could not return in person.
And I guess I'm thinking of remote dual language. And maybe what I need to ask first is, tell us what remote learning looks like? Because I think there's so many parents that don't understand, what is that going to be? Is that going to be synchronous teaching or are their teachers assigned to do that?
I, I know that Mrs. Colmine is going to review that on our August third, at our August third meeting. So we have that on our DOS for August third.
So is there any way parents who are still struggling in knowing whether they want to do remote or not can get more information on that prior to that August third date?
Mrs. Utterback.
Yes, the Office of Student Placement set up a email address. So if any family can email remotelearning@ops.org. And when they send the email, an automatic reply will come back with the criteria of what we expect with remote learning. And then they were able to fill drop-down menu to express an interest. And so there's lots of information that is out there on that automatic reply.
So we can't say yet whether it's synchronous learning or independent study?
Yeah, I will have to defer to Melissa Colmine on the academic part of remote learning.
And, and the other thing that I'm just thinking, too, as we're sitting here, so is, are our board meetings being translated in Spanish and put out on the web that way? Because I've actually had students who can speak English and write English, write letters. One young man wrote me a letter from his parents who don't speak English saying, you know, these are my questions and we don't want to go back to school, we want to do remote because of the impact in our community. So have we ever thought about doing that so that our Hispanic community has a better ability to hear what we're all saying? I don't know, I'm just curious, from a community standpoint.
I, I, I did a Spanish language interview this afternoon that'll be airing on Radio Lobo, I think, on Wednesday. But we have, we use our bilingual liaisons to make sure that our families get the information. The new, the information that goes out from Mr. Maskell's team and communications goes out in other languages. Some of our languages that are more spoken than written. We have folks who speak with, with that community. I know I'm also meeting with the Somali community. I have a translator who already, who always volunteers so that I can have that outreach personally to the Somali community. So we have a lot of different ways because we have many languages, especially our Karin community, which is really large here. We use our bilingual liaisons and there was actually a parent engagement specialist that was added this year to Mrs. Utterback's team to make sure that our Karin families get what they need. Spanish is obviously the largest at almost forty percent of our student body. And we have ample translation available in, in Spanish, available for our families. In terms of the board meeting being translated, I don't believe that we currently do that. And it's certainly something we can explore.
I, I just think maybe it might be a good idea just as we're going through this and just thinking about the email I received and just feeling that heartfelt child trying to express the parents' thoughts. So, yes, can you tell us about more of what the remote learning environment looks like as people think about applying for it?
So we will have a presentation on August third, but to answer your question specifically, it will follow the family three-two model. It will include synchronous learning.
On those days where they're assigned, but not on the days where they're not? Okay. So, um, and, and we don't know how many students, correct? I just want to say that again publicly because we don't know how many teachers we have available to teach that. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
Yes, as Dr. Logan stated earlier, as of late this afternoon, we had one thousand four hundred applications. And we're working closely with curriculum, instruction and support, human resources and research to determine next steps. With, we've already started the process of building the schools. And so once we have a staffing number and we're working with applications on those students that have a medical need or like the young lady spoke tonight, that may have an adult in the home that has a medical condition.
So is that fourteen hundred families or students?
Fourteen hundred students.
Students, okay.
Student applications.
And then it just is making me think about the question that we had for Mrs. Neelis Brash and, and Mr. Roberts. Will we get, is there something special this year that, because we are not going to be fifty percent in a building, do we still get funding for the students who are doing remote? I'm just curious about that as we.
We would, we would continue to get, to get funding for the students. As, and I'm, I will reiterate, we're going to work towards one hundred percent and hopefully very soon be able to transition to one hundred percent as soon as it is safe and responsible to do so. We're working towards that, which is why we have, some of our students already will be coming at one hundred percent. What's interesting is we have families that we have at a hundred percent who don't want a hundred percent. So, I mean, there's not going to be, I don't believe we're going to get to please everyone. So we have to go with what's safe and responsible at this point.
When will we do those reevaluations? That was one of the questions I got.
Um, actually, we have a leadership meeting tomorrow to proceed forward with next steps. And so in the near future, families will be notified on their next steps in order to be considered into remote learning. And then human resources will support the staffing piece.
Okay. And what about, I think about the gentleman who spoke with the student with the IEP and the resources that need to be offered? How will that work when we're doing the three-two?
Students will still receive their IEP services. So they'll see them when they're in school in person, but then some of them will also receive them remotely.
When they're at home or?
Some of them would, some of them could receive services while they are at home, yes.
Okay.
So it could be a combination, depends on their IEP.
Okay. And will be able to communicate that to them by the time school starts?
So yes, Kiera Saldeana did mention that in the last board meeting when that was one of the questions answered. And then any parent who has reached out, they have helped them or they refer them to their IEP team.
So parents with students with IEPs should really reach out to special ed to get an answer specific to their student? Is that?
So right now, their IEP is in good standing. If they have questions, they should reach out to their case manager.
Okay. So just so that parents know what to do and how to do that, okay. I had a question, and maybe this is to Mr. Wake, Wakefield on bus drivers. I had a bus driver reach out to me and ask how the training will work there. And if a student gets on the bus without a mask, what do they do and how do they handle that? And I mean, we saw kind of what happened here at the board meeting tonight. But how does the bus driver handle that and how will that be communicated to them?
We are, we're still working out some of those procedures and Mr. Salas is working on that. Training, we're, all training is going to be as much virtual as possible. But we do recognize that not all training can be virtual. So there will be both a mixture for bus drivers of in-person and virtual training as we implement new procedures.
Okay. And then I might, I think one of my, I'm about done. One of my questions on attendance, and I had a parent reach out to me this weekend and said, you know, hey, it was really hard to get my child up before two in the afternoon. And high schoolers tend to stay up late anyway. How, how in the days when they're not in school is that really, how will, do they log on? And we can track how many minutes they're on there? I don't know, I'm just curious.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, that we know it is an expectation that student attendance will be taken every day during the three-two model and at-home learning. We know that teachers will be preparing lessons and assignments and projects for students to work on. The good thing is Infinite Campus has currently released, which is our attendance tracking system, has recently released some new features. They released those features on July sixth where teachers will be able to interact with students online to check and connect. And so as we're exploring those features and getting more feedback, we'll have more information. But I will say this, that, you know, we all know that this is certainly an unprecedented time. And this is a time, too, where our parents have been working side by side with us and it's been a struggle for them as well. But students need to be responsible. And the, the most wonderful thing, and I can say that, is we will now have the one-to-one technology initiative that will provide the resources for students to engage and remain connected with their teachers every day of the week. And we didn't have that in March.
Right, I do think it will be challenging for teachers when they're teaching in the classroom to also have those students at home. So I guess that's why at the secondary level, I'd really like to see whoever wants to have a webcam in their classroom and says, hey, yes, I'd prefer to do it this way so that I can connect with everybody during that period. That we just try to move to that. I think it's not ideal, but it's much better than the challenge that I think teachers will have trying to connect while they're also teaching a group of other students.
Correct. And as we learn more about these features that just recently came out, we also know that our curriculum team will be educating and providing resources to our teachers to ensure that they have the necessary supports and academic tools to provide to students as they transition to at-home learning. But it will be an expectation and grading will, will be impacted.
Sure. So I guess I do have one more question and that's from Mr. Eubanks. And I thought about it as Ms. Cassidy talked about what the other metro schools are doing and what our schools are doing. I've had a number of questions come up on, and I do not know this because I've never looked into it myself, but I've had a number of questions from people on NSAA and hardship rules. Is that if your district doesn't participate in a sport, that you could participate in a different school without that March fifteenth? I, I'm just trying to understand that and people who have been reaching out to me and so I don't know that at all.
Excellent question, but I'm not here to speak on behalf of the NSAA. In, in the bylaws, students have, and their parents and families have a right to present hardship cases for multiple reasons, whether it's age, whether it's transfer school rules, those kind of things. So that would be up to the Nebraska School Activities Association to, to decide.
Okay, thanks. No, I appreciate that because I, what I've not, we were always at one school, so I don't understand that as well. Thank you very much for your answers to my question.
Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Snell. The first question I have is in regards to open houses. Can someone share a little bit about what that might look like with our schools?
We just sent the guidance to principals on Friday. Come on up, Mrs. Colmine. We just sent the guidelines to principals on Thursday or Friday last week.
So the guidance that went out last week was regarding the early bird or, or safe back-to-school nights, depending on what grade level you're in, it's called differently. And so each school is provided a guidance document with a series of questions to help them take into consideration and plan how they will have their early bird or back-to-school nights in a safe manner. Social distancing, we're encouraging them to have them outside, have stations, how to set those stations up for a safe and responsible, a safe and responsible return.
And so then are we anticipating, I guess, because it's typically just one night for each school, right? I, I can't remember.
So the early bird and the back-to-school night, it is one night. Schools do, do get too determined when that is. They're working with PNP or they're working with their own communication to send that communication out to parents. That should be coming soon because they did just receive the guidance last, I think it was Thursday or Friday. As far as open house specifically goes, there was some planning within CIS and district communications where that may look virtually this year.
Okay. And so with the safe back-to-school, the early bird that you're speaking of, so that will be open for the one night for the entire school? Or are we separating that with the alphabet as well?
So schools were given guidance, because every school's a different size. And so larger schools may have different times set aside for different grades or different letters of the alphabet, things like that. A smaller school may be able to do it. or different letters of the alphabet, things like that. A smaller school may be able to do it all at once.
Thank you. My next question is in regards to student activities with regards to like strings, band, gets it intalented. Are they still going to be able to participate in those types of activities or...
Yes, they will.
Okay. And then, I know Dr. Logan, you and I, I've asked you this question before with regards to food for students when they are, with their at-home days from school. And what I failed to mention or ask you was that, what about the students that will be doing full remote? Will they still be provided food as well?
We will give you an update on August 3rd because we're still working with USDA.
And then, my very last question, which maybe is not a question because I, I might already know the answer to this, but it's for Mr. Wakefield. So, both you and Dr. Logan have already mentioned that we're pretty much fully staffed at all of our buildings as far as teachers go. But do you anticipate, and maybe you can't answer this, but do you anticipate with the return-to-work form that there might be a larger impact of teachers that might say that, "No, I can't return to work" because of health reasons that will impact the, the number of teachers or the high percentage of people that we already have saying that they will come to work or that they're able to?
We've already been receiving response on that return-to-work notification and the numbers have actually been quite low as a percentage of our teachers. Not that I'm encouraging anyone else to, to fill it out, but I've been very impressed with how low they are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Mr. Smith.
I just had a question about if we do have a student or family teacher who gets COVID, is there things in place to keep it anonymous and not reveal who that student or teacher may be?
Yes, we would, we would not reveal a name. We would have to share information with someone who had direct contact, but we would not reveal any protected health information or a name.
So the kids who were, will be in that classroom would know that one of your students or one of your classmates tested positive and you may need to get tested? Or how, how will we roll that out?
And we would work with local health officials to determine what sort of notification would be most appropriate in that case. There, there are some nuances to direct contact, especially when we have masks and appropriate social distancing. So we'd work with county health or, or medical providers to determine what appropriate contact would be.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Snite.
Thank you, President Snow, and thank you all of you for the work that you've been doing. I appreciate all the information. If I ask questions, I should already know the answer to. I apologize in advance. My first questions are around attendance. One of them was, I appreciate the work on getting the thermometers. How are you going to determine the need for thermometers? This is my first question.
Well, that's a very good question. In, in my work with Lori Bota, who's the supervisor of health services, and Dr. Terry Norris, we're compiling numbers of oldest and only and starting with that list and then working obviously with our schools to determine what, who may be the need for that. We do know that we've ordered 20,000 thermometers. And so, once we get the specific number back around oldest and only, that will give us a better basis.
Okay. And then...
And I, I will add to that too. As, as always, when our health provide, healthcare staff at the building level are working with families and well as our social workers, information like that is also always shared. And so, they work behind the scenes to provide families with what resources that they may need.
Okay, thank you. And then, you mentioned, I guess my question is, how do parents prove that it's COVID-related for their child? Do they have to take a test or...
You know what? It's, it's, I hate to say the honest policy, but you know, when there's confidentiality, there may be someone. So when we look at absences, an excused absence could be ill, just like when a parent calls in and says, "My child has the flu." That's recorded as ill. Our Board, Board of Education states that if you provide a medical note, it is changed from an excused ill absence to an excused medical. And so, it would be no different than a parent calling in and saying that they have the flu. Now, if a parent wants it recorded as medical, which is also excused, they would provide a doctor's note.
Okay. And then, as far as parents reporting, how are you going to provide, I guess, instructions or training to families on how to report?
Yes. At the start of every school year, we meet with administrators and then we also meet with our attendance secretaries. And we plan to provide guidance to our families through working with district communications as well as giving schools tidbits and pieces to share in their newsletters.
Okay. So my next question, and I know this had came up before because I know it was a concern of Dr. Logan's, was around the 3-2 and the, the need for daycares, especially with our working parents. I know that you were looking into it. Do we have something on that?
We'll provide you a written update in about 10 days.
Okay, okay. Um, I guess that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Crackey.
I was taking it for granted that we had iPads. I know we didn't, but we keep talking about remote or we keep talking about those kinds of things. What will happen in those households that don't have the iPads yet?
Right now, all of our secondary students will have an iPad at the start of the school year. It's our elementary students that will not. They'll come in two final waves. The final wave comes in September 23rd. That's the date it's slated for right now. We have provided guidance for all of the teachers on what at-home learning looks like. And it's a consistent schedule for the elementary school-age student by, by subject area. And it gives them ideas and examples of what they should be providing, not just digitally, but also at paper and print materials. And so, they will still continue to learn in that manner without the iPad until they receive their iPad, which will bring the blended approach.
I, I know we have some computers perhaps available in some form. And I'm wondering if the students that are in high school and have already experienced and have those, is there any way that the little people could have the iPads?
So we are, are looking at that and we've been working with IMS and we will make sure that our most vulnerable students and the elementary get those first.
I, I hope so because that was, I wanted to just mention it because I keep thinking of that as we keep talking about all of this, what will happen. And then, I didn't want to dampen the parade of the early night with parents. And when we stay outside, it may rain that night. All the plans that you do outside for that night may not be a reality. So, you better have Plan B if they're coming back.
And that is part of the guidance is to have a rain date, just in case that happens. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey. Up next is Ms. Ryan. Did you have a question? Mrs. Cassidy.
Why not? We're asking, we're still here, right? 11/19? Let's get a few more out. Attendance. Thank you again for your portion. I want to thank you, first of all, for making sure, and let's say it again, high school students, middle school students, you will be, attendance will be taken while you're at home. I want to say it for my own kids, although they better be sleeping.
That'll be a new hashtag.
Yes.
Be a responsible student.
Someone mentioned in here how difficult it is to get your children out of bed even during March, April, because there wasn't a timeframe. If I can make a suggestion, maybe you can put a timer on there? Like they have to check in by 10:00 AM, something? Get these kids out of bed?
You're absolutely, yes. And you know, it's, it's a life skill, showing up on time. When we talk to employers, one of the number one things that they struggle with is employees learning to show up and have the initiative on time. And so, our young people unfortunately are experiencing some life lessons, but we're hopeful that they'll grow from this and they'll be more responsible and prepared as they learn these lessons.
But it will be laid out for them that they will be, attendance will be taken. And I'm assuming as long as they're, they've checked in and then, of course, they'll be responsible for homework and whatnot, but it won't be a certain timeframe of the day or...
Yeah, I do not want to comment
You might not know all the...
Right, on the specificities, but students will be expected as well as staff to check and connect. And there's some features that we're learning about how that will work. And we want to choose the best, the best feature that's most appropriate for our students and our staff. Because we know they're also going to have young people in front of them. But there's assignments that will be given, projects to work on, and then having the tools to do it is critical.
Much like they did, have been doing since March, so...
Yes.
Okay. I love the attendance piece though, so thank you.
You're welcome.
My second question is still a little bit attendance-related. You mentioned several times that students will, they will be excused absences if they are COVID-related. Will that also take into account if, let's say, a student has a parent that tests positive for COVID and that student has to quarantine with the rest of the family? That, is that situation also excused?
Yes, absolutely. You know, when we talk about a student staying home, we expect that student to stay home if someone in their home is ill or experiencing. So all of that is COVID-related and all of that guidance will be provided to attendance secretaries, administrators, and shared with families.
Okay, perfect. I think that's it for attendance. My last question, and I just kind of thought of this. We talked, of course, about sports. What about after-school, like clubs? Will those still be, I'm thinking about like middle school and high school level? Are those not going to be affected? Are we still going to have opportunities for Spanish club?
We're going to work on that. We have, we also, the other challenge that we will have, Ms. Cassidy, is that we need to clean the buildings very thoroughly.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking.
So we need to make sure that we don't have, you know, folks in there all, all evening. So we'll be working on that over the next three weeks to, to come up with the plan. And we are trying to push as far out as we can because every day, things change. It's, I mean, and one day is like two weeks every day. So, we're trying to push that out as far as we can, especially knowing that we expect some pretty significant national announcements that will impact how everybody is looking, starting to look at what we're going to be doing in the fall.
Okay, that's valid. Thank you.
Mrs. Gotti.
I'm just thinking about from an operations, you know, kind of attendance perspective. If someone, as Mr. Smith and Ms. Cassidy have already mentioned, gets COVID, they're in a classroom. Let's say it's at the middle school or high school level where it's a block class or even the elementary where they're there all day. Will other students be needed, need to be required, I guess, to quarantine in that classroom? Or because we're wearing masks, we'll say, "Okay, just keep an eye on symptoms." And so, I'm curious to know about that because that could impact a whole...
We're already getting practice on that with athletics. So, we know that depends on the level of exposure on who has to quarantine and for how long. So, some it's 14, I mean, some, you know, it, it's been, it's been so variable and the social distance and whether or not there was protective facial covering has impacted how long that'll be. So, I think that that's one, one thing that we probably need to, as we understand more, work so that everybody is not expecting to be sent home for 14 days. Because it's likely not to be that as much, you know, unless the contact was really, really close. So, so we have a lot of, we talked about this a little bit last time, and I know Dr. Poor has been trying to socialize the fact that the circumstances of the contact make a huge difference in whether or not there is the need to, to, to go home. So, an example I'll give is first grader on, not, first grade class, everybody's got a facial covering on. There's a kid doesn't wear facial covering, teacher has COVID. The other kids may come back the next day. That one child may have to go home 14 days. The teacher's gone too, right? So they'd have to have some sort of coverage for that teacher. So, the facial covering will make a difference and, and the amount of contact will make a difference. And it literally is, and I mean, like I said, we're already getting practice with this. It literally is what is the coverage, what is the duration of the coverage? The closeness, the social distancing, the facial covering, all of that is going into each one of these decisions. It's not one-size-fits-all. Really, we've been, I've been pleased, I guess, maybe is the right word. But to see that, you know, it is a kind of a case-by-case basis, but always we have a person from Douglas County Health. Our person happens to be Mr. Justin Frederick, who works, who was the liaison to the Omaha Public Schools. So, he's very familiar with our personnel. He's on our weekly call that gives advice to the superintendent about how things are going and so on and so forth. So, that's kind of how that, that will, will be handled. We can all pretty much say, if everybody has to go home 14 days every time, it would be almost nearly impossible for us to have any sort of semblance of anything because it's not just the teachers. It's a bus driver and the bus driver is also a grandparent, you know? So we've got, we've got a lot of moving parts here trying to make the best decision. But we can anticipate some disruptions. We're going to work, we do everything in our power to limit those disro, just, limit those disruptions by the systems that we have set up in schools so that we can have school every day for as long as we, you know, for, from now to the end of the school year or from August 11th to the end of the school year.
Now, thank you. I think that's really important for parents to know because there's that fear out there that if someone in my child's classroom gets it, then my kid is home again for 14 days. And so, I think that's, thank you very much for clarifying.
Mr. Proman.
So if a student in a classroom is diagnosed as positive, will that information be shared immediately with the classmates?
The best scenario I can give you is, let's take for example, pertussis. If a student is diagnosed with pertussis, the health supervisor of the Omaha Public Schools communicates with the Douglas County Health Department or the Douglas County Health Department may communicate with, with us. And then, we have to work with SIS to get schedules of every student that has been in that particular area. I have to say, the unfortunate thing about COVID is like Dr. Logan stated, is every situation is different. And so, we are on calls each week with the team at the Douglas County Health Department and they are putting together a playbook for schools. Because we've also asked ourselves the internal question, so if a sibling was diagnosed, what about their siblings at the other schools? And what about the kids that rode those buses? And so, that playbook's going to really give us guidance. And there are also COVID trackers that they work with because it may work with us. We have developed an internal process that school nurses, if they are known through the attendance secretary of a, of a known case, then they will report that up to Mrs. Lori Bota and she will then share that with the Douglas County Health Department each day. And so, the best answer I can give you is reiterating and echoing Dr. Logan's sentiments that those playbooks, the playbook, is being designed as we speak. And that will give us guidance as to, because we rely on the, the recommendations of the public health officials. And so, if they say, if a student has it and they say to quarantine all those students and notify, they will be the ones to provide us with the letters to do so. But those conversations are evolving literally every single week.
Yeah, I, I would just feel better about a plan where we don't wait and, and let an outside organization decide.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I would just prefer that if someone in my daughter's class has COVID, we don't go through that process. I just get a notification that someone in her class has it. I think that's better than, than having intermediate reason. Is that, so is that possible?
We are exploring, exploring all those scenarios because I'm a parent too. And so, but we also have to look at the bigger picture and verify cases. And so, those are the same questions, Mr. Proman, that we've asked the Douglas County Health Department is, you know, I mean, do we have a legal obligation to notify our families? And then, what if it's somebody just stating that they may have had COVID? So there's all those integral pieces that we share each week on our phone calls. And I'm hopeful that that playbook will give us the exact specificity on if scenario A, here is what you're supposed to do. And I'm hopeful that that playbook will give us the exact specificity on if scenario A, here is what you're supposed to do. We can, we can only hope that it's that laid out for us. But we will make the best decision for the safety of our staff and students in our district.
Couple of other questions is, you know, I don't really like hearing about possibilities. I prefer to hear more about probabilities. Today, what is the probability that on August 11th, this is the plan that we are going with?
Plan with regards to?
Three, two.
With, I'm sorry.
The three, two family plan. What is the probability that that is going to be what we have in four weeks?
I, I don't know. I mean, that's the plan that we have right now. If things got remarkably better, we would, and, you know, we were told we don't need to socially distance and some other things. We might be able to go five days a week or could go in the opposite direction. But we don't know the probability of, we don't know the probability of that. We also don't know how many cases will impact our ability to deliver. So if we had, if we had 70, I mean, I'm going to be honest. My biggest fear, if you've ever gone to the bus lot in the morning, the bus drivers come into this main area and they kind of hang out until they do their routes and shoot the breeze. And my biggest fear is we have a spread in something, you know, like that. I mean, I don't know if I sent, I know I sent it to my staff. We had a superintendent in a, in a school district in California decide to have an in-person principals meeting. Everybody had to go home and quarantine. So there was, everybody was impacted. So those are the kinds of things that we, right, we, I cannot share if that's going to happen. We're going to hope so, but we've seen the choices that folks are making make it more likely for us to have one of those than not. So, you know, we're going to be hopeful that that doesn't happen. You know, we are preparing for spotty disruptions. And we hope that those do not become large scale. We're hoping that we can keep things really small, just reinforcing the fact that we are working so hard to get our children back in school. So we don't have, I can't give you probability numbers. I, no one, no one knows that.
Okay, well, I would just, they're probably not listening. But if anyone from the, the health department is listening, I would encourage to perhaps dial back some of the reopenings. And I understand the, the economic side of things, I'm not blind to that.
Sure.
But I just have a hard time understanding why we're allowing people to go into buildings called bars and get drunk when we're trying to get kids back in school. I don't think that the county's doing everything it can do to put our children in a position to go back to school. There's absolutely no sense in allowing bars to open so people can congregate and get drunk in groups when that necessarily decreases our ability to have children return to school. So if anyone from the Douglas County, you know, health department is listening, who have the ability to put directed health measures into practice, perhaps we could dial back things like, you know, congregating in bars to get drunk when it decreases our ability to have children back in school.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Well said. Mrs. Crackey.
Athletic department. And that would be those little thermometers that they're using to check people in different places. Would you be able, would that be practical to do when they come to practice on the teams? Like you have seven in the high school. I mean, there's seven, I don't know how expensive those are. I'd like it if we could try, do that other places too within the district, but I don't know how expensive that is.
That's, that's a great question, and we're exploring every avenue to, to keep the kids safe. I will say that temperature checks before each practice and activity are some of the guidelines from the National Federation and the NSA A. Many school districts have tried to tackle that by taking, putting that in the hands of the parents, so on and so forth. But we, we're exploring every option in order to keep the kids safe.
But it, but it looks like it could be easy as they just line up and go out to the field. I, I don't know.
I haven't done any travel since, since the pandemic, but I know that those are used at airlines and so on. Yes.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Crackey, I can share with you, at this time, we do not plan to do temperature checks. We are giving our families thermometers, but we do not plan to give temperature checks. Our physician that gives us advice has said that the, that because children are so asymptomatic, we, we won't get a lot of information from those, and we wouldn't be collecting that data. Because whatever you're going to do, you should be collecting the data. And so obviously, just like in any other instance, if a child presents with, with fever-like symptoms, which we all know, you know, a child kind of just goes limp. You know, you can kind of tell they have, that child would go to the nurse. And we would follow what we normally do under any other circumstance when the child gets a fever. But at this time, our plan is to provide our families with tools and to, you know, monitor like we would normally monitor. But to do those temperature checks for children is, has not been recommended to us at this time.
Thank you. And I have one more comment about sports. I think it was mentioned earlier about some sports not, if they won't be able to meet or play. Canceling one's fall sport, I think you should have to cancel all fall sports. Because you cancel one, then the students that was in a sport, do they get to join another sport? And I think at the end of the day, they are student athletes. And if we know our student athletes are still coming into contact and have COVID symptoms just with summer practice, imagine when they're playing districts that aren't doing the same guidelines as OPS. Imagine a coach that doesn't coach, teach in OPS, but volunteer shows up and passes that to a student. That exposes not just that student, but their family and other students in that school. And I think we really have to focus on this and make sure that our first priority is education and that kids need to learn in a safe environment. And sports, that stuff will come later. I really do believe that. Because I think a lot of people focus too much on sports. And it's a shame that we don't have leaders in the state to just step up and say, no fall sports. With that, anything else? Okay, we made it to the end, not the end of the meeting, closed session. Dr. Holman. Thank you, everyone, for presenting. I appreciate it.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, legal advice, pending litigation, real estate, and negotiations.
There's a motion to go into closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Roll call, please.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
And I, I.
Motion carries. Board, we will be meeting in the superintendent's conference room for closed session. It's a larger space. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to discuss, needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, legal advice, pending litigation, real estate, and negotiations. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at 11:40. All right, we're back on. Let the record reflect, the Board came out of closed session at 11:58. There's a receipt of reports, which is C-BOK, Phase One and Phase Two. Our last item is the approval is Item L. I will entertain a motion to approve Item L. There's a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mrs. Godding, or Mr. Ray. Roll call, please.
Pearlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snite.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy. Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good night. Meeting's adjourned.